Good morning. I call to order the September 16, 2021, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Shannon Bays, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Commissioner Fisher is at another event this morning and will not be at today's meeting. Roll call. Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Scholl?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Thank you, Gary. All rise. I will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. As always, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. Registration for public comment will close at five minutes past 10:00. I would remind everyone, including all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, we have a wildfire update. Daniel Niebauer, interim Director of Disaster Management, will present. He is on Zoom this morning, so one moment, please, for us to load him here in the room. All right, Daniel, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners, and Administrator Smith. The Bull Complex Fire is at 21,191 acres. That's up 1,842 acres since last Thursday, last week. It is 15% contained, up 8% since last Thursday. There are 447 personnel. That's down 142 personnel since last Thursday. The command of the fire will be transitioning tomorrow to a new incident management team. Fire will continue to be most active on the north and west perimeters, but it is growing very slowly. Higher humidity, light winds or winds out of the west have slowed the growth of the fire. The incident management team is very optimistic for the rain this weekend. It will not put out the fire, but it will significantly slow the growth and its ability to expand. In regards to the rain this weekend, the majority of the rain will be Friday night through Saturday morning with another round late Saturday into Sunday. This rain will likely not be a wildfire season-ending event, unfortunately, but should be a really good step along the way. Even with the rain and cooler weather, we are still in extreme drought risk. Fire risk is still high, and fire bans are still applicable across the county. So despite the fact that it's getting cooler and a little rainy, we're going to ask people to remember no fires outdoors. Well, any questions?
Thank you, Daniel, for that. I was particularly interested in, does Wildfire can view it out my window, my home? Any questions for the presenter? Any comments from anybody? Seeing none, thank you very much, Daniel.
All right. Thank you, Daniel. Next, COVID-19 updates. Philip Mason-Joyner, Public Health Director, will present. He is also on Zoom. Go ahead, Philip.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners, and thank you, Shannon, for already getting the slideshow up. For your weekly COVID-19 update, I am happy to share, next slide, please, that we did see a little bit of a drop in terms of weekly cases, 881 over the past week. Sadly, this does include seven deaths in our county related to COVID-19. Multloma County with a little over 1,204 deaths, and Washington County at 982 with four deaths. Next slide, please. Here is our weekly case graph, which shows you 109 cases, less cases than the week previous. So this is our first week that we've seen cases go downwards since Oregon has reopened. That is positive news, and we hope that this trend will continue. Next slide, please. Just as our overall case rate for the community, when you also look at the top here with individuals who are unvaccinated on their COVID-19 case rates compared to the vaccinated, both have gone down in the lines and reflects that. Next slide. Terms of vaccinations, we continue to see an uptick in vaccines locally. Over 4,800 individuals in the past week, Clackamas County community members have been vaccinated, so that's good news. We're at about 73% for individuals 18 and older that have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine, and that pretty much averages to what the state of Oregon overall is at, around 73%. Next slide. Hospitalizations, this information this week is pretty comparable to last week. 1,075 COVID-19 patients who are COVID-positive in Oregon hospitals this week. The length of stay for COVID-19-positive patients is about six days. And in Region 1, which you can see on the right-hand side here in blue, so it includes the Portland metro counties, but also a couple of the coastal counties, 22 ICU beds available out of 346 in this region. With the reopening of schools, all of our schools open for full-time in-person instruction. There is a lot of community interest and needs around access and information about testings and concerns about potential exposures. So this information is what we are promoting to the public. It's also on our Clackamas County's website with links to the CDC's symptom checker if folks want to check in terms of their symptoms and if they need to get a test, what to do if you've been exposed, what is the process for folks who are vaccinated or if you are not vaccinated. All that information is readily available on our website, clackamas.us/coronavirus. And I will say with schools, it's been very busy. We have 77 active COVID-19 outbreaks. We're managing mostly within long-term care facilities, work sites of all types, and some within our local schools. We have two exposures that were pretty significant, have received some media attention. One was the bus exposure that occurred in the Lake Oswego School District we talked about last week. This week, it's been the Glad, one of the elementary schools within the Gladstone School District, which we've worked on this week, requiring their school to have to temporarily move to distance learning because it's had such an impact that they're not able to continue their regular operations. So working with the school through those issues, and that's always disappointing. It is still as rare when you consider we have hundreds of schools in this county. We do all that we can to work with the schools on strong plans and mitigation tools, and sometimes those plans, you know, they don't always get fully. Sometimes challenges happen, so it's disappointing that that happened. We've been working really actively with the school to address the concerns with families, but just wanted to share that with the board that this has occurred. Next slide, please. There is a lot of community interest still around the topic of boosters, and I do want to continue to clarify that, yes, folks who are immunocompromised can now, and that's roughly about 5% of our Clackamas County population, they can now seek and receive a third dose of a COVID vaccine from their health care provider. This is a little bit different than a booster. The third dose can be given 20 days after they receive their second shot, so a lot earlier. Boosters could be six months, eight months, or a year potentially after you receive your that second dose of the vaccine to give you an increased boost of protection. At this time, we do not have approval from our federal or state partners to provide boosters locally. There is a large national meeting that is occurring actually tomorrow all day where they will discuss for Pfizer vaccine if the booster will be approved. So hold tight. We will continue to be staffed up and ready to provide booster vaccines when the time comes with our other pharmacy and clinic partners, but at this time, we are not providing boosters locally or really anywhere in the nation. Slide, please. Our work at Clackamas County Public Health around vaccines continues to be really working with partners to make the vaccine accessible, available. Really, it's not a supply issue at this point. Pharmacies across all communities have the vaccine available. Clinics, our five sites that we have offer every week across the county multiple days and into the evenings are available. We will continue to really fill in the gaps, provide those mobile and pop-up events, and make the vaccine available with partners, including boosters. Here, at this point, we're not in this region preparing to have a lot of those large mass vaccination sites. We're really trying to integrate it into the community, into clinics and neighborhoods, and make it available through those mechanisms. Next slide. And the last couple of weeks, I've been mentioning that through funding through the Oregon Health Authority, there is funding available for nonprofits to help in terms of meeting our vaccine goals. We would like to get Clackamas County to the 80% metric. We're at 73% right now for adults. That needs about 20,000 more individuals to meet that benchmark, and we recognize that as a government agency, it certainly takes a team effort. So there is funding available for partners to support this effort. Folks can go onto our website, clackamas.us, to ask grants and apply to help. The deadlines come quickly approaching October 1st to submit applications. And the last slide for this morning, like usual. If you're, the vaccine continues to be available, as I mentioned. All the information is on our website. You can also call our call center at 503-655-8224. Happy to go to any events, any work sites, really want to make the vaccine available for those who want it. And thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have this morning.
Thank you, Philip. Do any of the Commissioners have comments or questions? I just have a couple. The rate of COVID is dropping, correct?
Yes. It has dropped this week, I will say. I'm hopeful that it will continue to move in that direction.
Yeah, I'm just confirming that. That's very good news. You know, I heard a rumor on the news, and I'm always leery of what I hear, and maybe you can help me with this. Are people who are asymptomatic being admitted into hospitals in Oregon?
Are people who are being asymptomatic being admitted into hospitals?
Yeah, that was a report that I heard. That didn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I haven't heard that. It really is folks who have severe symptoms that are being admitted into the hospital.
Thank you for clearing that up. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, just, I just want to just say more of a comment, unless you have any response, Philip, and that is that since the last couple of weeks, there's been a significant uptick, as I understand it, in people volunteering to get the vaccination. So I'm seeing the numbers climb almost daily. Is that trend likely to continue, do you think?
Certainly hope so. And, you know, part of the meeting, which I didn't mention, that our national partners are having is around age eligibility. Right now, individuals only 12 and older are able to receive the vaccine. If that age drops, that will also. I know that there's a lot of parents and families that really are interested in having their young people be vaccinated. So for folks who have been hesitant and are now at a point where they're ready to be vaccinated for younger age groups, I am hopeful that we can continue to have all these trends really continue to move in the positive direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, back to the boosters. It sounds as if Pfizer is going to be ready first. Is there any information on whether or not, you know, for example, I've had my vaccination with Moderna, so is the advice to stick to the same shot? They're both, I guess, messenger RNA, so do we know if that's doable? And my understanding from you is that, again, someone like myself, who definitely would like to get a booster when the time comes, you can get it from your private health provider, but we will not be publicly doing it. Is that what I heard? Philip?
We will be providing, our clinics that we have throughout the community will be available. It's, for most folks, they're not going to be able to just go back to the place that they got their original dose, because that was at those drive-through clinics and those mass vaccination clinics, which are no longer open. So folks will be able to access it through pharmacies, you know, Providence Kaiser, legacy clinics, you name it. The vaccine is going to be readily available throughout the community. We'll have, we'll be promoting lots of information when the time comes about, different ways that you can get access to the vaccine, hopefully closer to home for a lot of folks.
And it hasn't really been improved for a booster yet, right? I mean...
It's not. That's the big meeting tomorrow, so I'll have an update for the board next week. But Pfizer will be first, if it does move forward, followed shortly afterwards by Moderna.
Okay.
At this point, our assumption is that you would receive the same vaccine, although it's a developing situation, and if that changes, I'll certainly let the board know.
Okay. Thanks, Philip.
Thank you.
Philip, one quick question. How many people in Clackamas County did we vaccinate last week?
A little over 4,700 people, I believe.
And Commissioner Savis is right. That is going up. That's probably one of our highest weeks, I'm guessing. I don't know.
Yeah, we've been, the month of September has been going well. We've been over 4,000, and it continues to steadily increase. You know, in July and most of August, we were 1,000 to 2,000 individuals. So we have seen an uptick in vaccinations.
Good. Thank you for that. Any other comments for Philip on this? Thank you for your comprehensive report. Gary?
Thank you, Philip. Next, Chair, if you would recess the board and reconvene as the Housing Authority.
I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. First, Housing Authority Commissioner Ann Lienstra, she is not in the Zoom room, so I'm afraid she's not here today, so we'll move on. This is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Approval of a board order to write off uncollectible accounts for the first quarter of fiscal year 2022. Total proposed write-off is $644.45. Approval to apply for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Family Self-Sufficiency Coordinator Grant Renewal Funding. Total grant is $129,468, funded through Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Shannon. I will now entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything?
No, Chair. Just want to make sure we include the item two, the previously approved land use issue.
This is the Housing Authority Board.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mixed them up, then.
Yeah, that's okay, Paul. We'll get to that.
Okay, I see. I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's all right. Any other comments on the Housing Authority Agenda? Seeing none, Shannon, can you call the poll?
Mr. Savis?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes for zero. I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Chair Smith, next is a previously approved land use issue, and since we published this agenda, County Counsel advises us that we could rather than do this item here, have this on your consent agenda for today's meeting. So with your approval, what we'll do is we'll just move this item to the Consent Agenda under Transportation and Development. Is that okay?
That's fine with me.
Okay, great. So with that, we'll move on to the regular consent agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda by title only and add the item we just discussed, the previously approved land use issue? Thank you.
Health Housing and Human Services. Approval of renewal intergovernmental agreement with State of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority, for the Foodborne Illness Prevention Program. There is no maximum agreement value. Funding is through a fee for services. No county general funds are involved. Approval of subrecipient professional services agreement with Cascade AIDS Project for Human Immunodeficiency Virus Testing and Counseling Services. Maximum agreement value is $75,000, funded through the State of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Approval of subrecipient professional services agreement with Outside In for Human Immunodeficiency Virus Testing and Counseling Services. Maximum agreement value is $22,184. Funding is through the State of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number 01 to a subrecipient grant agreement with Coda Inc. for Housing Assistance Program Services. This amendment extends the term of the agreement three months to September 30th, 2021, with no change to the agreement cost. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number 2 to the subrecipient agreement with Clackamas County Children's Commission for Rapid Rehousing Services. This amendment increases Emergency Solutions Grant COVID Funds budget by $150,000 for a new total of $243,500, funded through the U.S. Department of HUD ESG CARES Act Funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number 1 to the subrecipient agreement with Northwest Family Services. This amendment increases Emergency Solutions Grant COVID Funds budget by $300,000 for a new total of $657,500 as a grant, funded through U.S. Department of HUD ESG CARES Act Funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Change Order Number 5 between Clackamas County and Ann Crom Moysen Associated Architect, Inc. for the Sandy Health Clinic Project. Change Order Number 5 adds an additional $10,650 to the contract for Geotect Design Coordination, funded through Health Center Fund Balance. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Professional Services Agreement with Oregon Health and Sciences University for Emergency Medical Services. Agreement value is $111,213, funded through ambulance service franchise fees. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Department of Human Services for operation of community developmental disability services for Clackamas County. Total agreement value is $22,225,085, funded through Federal Medicaid and State General Fund. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number 1 to the subrecipient agreement with Clackamas Women's Services. Amendment increases Emergency Solutions Grant COVID Program Funds budget by $150,000 for a new total of $452,500 as a grant, funded through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, ESG CARES Act Funds. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development. Approval of the change in control of solid waste collection franchises currently held by Hoodview Disposal and Recycling, Inc., Camby Disposal, Inc., and West Lynn Refuse and Recycling, Inc. from Kahoot Companies Holdings to Waste Connections, U.S. Inc. This is an administrative change that will result in no change in services offered. There are no county general funds involved. Approval of an agreement with Confluence Environment Center for an AmeriCorps member, $14,000. Sustainability and solid waste program, solid waste franchise fees. No general funds are involved. Approval of a contract with Emory &amp; Sons Construction Group, LLC, for the Sunnyside Road ADA improvements, 122nd through 132nd. Total contract value is $744,914.50 from the road fund. No general funds are involved. A board order adopting previously approved Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zone Change Applications, Z0167-21-CP and Z0168-21-ZAP. Elected Officials. Approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board for enforcement related to recreational boating in Oregon. Total agreement value is $892,424 for the term July 1 through June 30, 2023. Initially funded through county general funds to be later reimbursed by the Oregon State Marine Board. $394,747.60 county general fund contribution. Approval of funding agreement between Clackamas County and Clackamas County Arts Alliance. Value of agreement is $192,405, funded through county general funds for the fiscal 2122 budget. Business and Community Services. Approval of a resolution to apply for Oregon Parks and Recreation Department County Opportunity Grant Program Funding for Barton Park's East RV Campground Roadway and RV Pads Paving. No county general funds are involved. Approval of infrastructure and additional shared cost agreement regarding the work source Clackamas One Stop between the Local Workforce Development Board, Chief Elected Official, and Required One Stop Partners. No county general funds are involved.
That concludes the consent agenda.
Sorry, I was catching my breath.
Yes, well, thank you. That was a lot of reading, Shannon. Yes, indeed. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. The motion has been made by Commissioner Savis for approval of the consent agenda. It has been seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further comment?
I was going to have Shannon just repeat that consent agenda, but I decided not to.
Oh, Paul, you're so funny today. Good thing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes for zero. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services.
Next is the consent agenda for Water Environment Services. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Approval of Amendment Number 1 with Murray Smith, Inc. for Engineer Design Services for the Force Main on I-205. Contract not to exceed $812,945 through West Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Shannon. Does any Commissioner wish to pull any item off this consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the West Consent Agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded. Any further comment? Hearing none, Shannon, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes for zero. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of the board consideration, and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them due to time. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take the first person who is here. I usually, we always take people who are in person first, and then we will go to the Zoom, and the Zoom people will be notified when the time is right. I have three cards in here, and in order. First up is Christine Kennedy. Please come forward, state your name and your general area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Please let me know if you can't hear me, okay? I have a soft voice.
Yeah, just move the microphone as close as you can, and that's okay.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
All right, I'll speak up. Good morning. Commissioner, Chair Smith, Commissioners, Administrator Schmidt, County Council. My name is Christine Kennedy. I live in Lake Oswego. I've testified many times by Zoom. You've encouraged me to attend, and I'm attending today, and I'm happy to be here.
Welcome. We, uh, thank you for your presence.
It's not without risk, but I'm willing to take it. Thank you very much. With 146 deaths by the actual date of death, two weeks ago, the week of August 29th through September 4th, has now become the second deadliest week of the pandemic for Oregon. Only the week of December 6th, excuse me, December 6th through 12th of 2020 saw more deaths. This is sobering. To me, it's sobering. We've got an issue. We still have an issue. My condolences to those in Clackamas County who've loved, who've lost loved ones. I'm a retired nurse. I've worked for 45 years as a nurse. I've seen a lot of death. I've held people's hands as they've died. Families suffer after people die, and this is a really sad time for those people. What is really sobering is that we do have a vaccine that's safe, effective, and free. If we didn't have a vaccine, we'd have a completely different picture. Recent bedboard information from OHSU consistently displays rates of 90% to 100% of those who are in ICU and on ventilators are unvaccinated. We're proud of the work that our Clackamas County Public Health Department has done with vaccinating. The real work now, as you've said, Chair Smith, is to continue vaccination, to encourage vaccination, especially in those areas with low vaccination rates. For example, Molalla and the cancellation of the high school vaccination. I know that was very controversial. I know it was controversial, but I think it was the right decision for the Public Health Department. I don't think it was the right decision for that community. You set the agenda, Chair Smith. I recognize that's a huge responsibility. But you only have one vote as the chair. Please allow this commission to be an effective commission. The people of Clackamas County are investing a half a million dollars in this commission. We need to focus on the serious issues at hand. Thank you.
I have a Commissioner in the queue.
Yes, ma'am.
Gary, thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'll wait if you have a question for me, too.
Regarding the Vaccination Clinic in Molalla, it was not canceled by the Health Authority. Would you explain that?
Yes, we've discussed this before. The Superintendent of the School District decided to cancel that clinic in consultation with our staff, but it was a decision of the Superintendent of the School District who made that call.
And I can understand why he wouldn't want that controversy at his school, and I believe it has been moved elsewhere. It has not been canceled. Thank you, Christine Kennedy, for coming today.
Was it moved elsewhere? Was that clinic moved elsewhere?
I'm not sure. We have clinics all over the county.
All right.
And the only thing you can, you can call up, the number that Philip had on the screen, and it can be delivered to your home if you need it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, Christine, I just want to thank you for coming today. Both my parents were nurses, and I often joke that when I got my immunizations and shots, there were plenty of times I got them at home because they could do that and do it. And I have appreciated your advocacy and coming forward. I am one of the Commissioners. I really have to say, I respect all my colleagues. It's my job to work with those that I am elected to serve with. And, and I will tell you, I am vaccinated. I hope to get the booster. I do think, as a public health measure, my attitude is, and this is just a difference of opinion with some folks, but I think I want to say it. My attitude of this is, it's not a lack of, liberty is a big part of who we are and our personal choices. That is part of the American ethos. But the other part that I think that we need to pay attention to in these difficult days is what I call community responsibility. Americans are known for being able to balance personal liberty, and what is our responsibility to the community to protect one another? And that's how I view this issue. So one of the reasons I get vaccinated, I'm going to get the booster, I'm going to get a flu shot, is because I also feel I help protect our community. Now, I know other folks may not agree with that attitude, and that's okay. It's all right. It's all about free speech. It's all about, you know, what our opinions are. But I think the message I would like to give to everybody today is, remember, liberty is critically important, a choice to who we are as Americans and Oregonians. But equally balanced and equally important is to look at it from an attitude as Americans and Oregonians, that we have a heartfelt duty to one another to help protect each other's health. So that's how I try and balance both. Both of those things, it's not here and here. Both of those things really need to be combined. And my hope is that people will start, folks will start at least listening and maybe thinking more that way and not be so fearful about this. I understand it's a, it's a new vaccine, but I think that it's perfectly safe, and I think it's important for folks to seriously consider, for their own good and for the good of their neighbors and friends in our communities, to get vaccinated. And you've been a real advocate for that, and thank you. And it's all right if people disagree with me. I don't mind that. It's just the way it goes.
That's life, isn't it?
Yeah, and, you know, hopefully I have some influence. And I never treat people differently because we have a personal disagreement over things. It's just not who, who I am. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. I appreciate your advice.
Thank you very much for your kind words. Yeah. Up next, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, just, I just want to just thank Christine for her, her commitment to service as a nurse and all the nurses out there that have taken their oath and commit to serve others, you know, and do no harm, which I think is one of the, one of the primary values of being a nurse. So in these times, and reflecting back even on last weekend, on the 20th anniversary of September 11th, just all the emergency responders, everyone, just, it's been a very, very sobering week or two with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Up next, my card, Manny Morrell. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you likewise have three minutes.
My name is Manny Morrell. I'm actually an employee of the county. I don't live in the county. I live in Vancouver. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come here and talk. I hope that this is coming across through my shield. I know it's hard to understand.
Oh, the shields are, are okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you guys are able to hear.
We have some stacked up over there. For the people who don't want to wear masks, shields are available. Just letting the folks know that. Go ahead.
I appreciate that. What I just want to say, Ms. Schrader, I swore an oath to the Constitution to defend it, and when I see these mandates, what I see, it started out with just a lockdown. It started out with just a mask. It started out with just a vaccine. When are we just going to say no? That's what I want to know. When are we going to say no to the government overreach and what the government tells us what to do with our lives? It is not my responsibility to tell somebody else how to be healthy. I can recommend, I can send recommendations. It's all I can do. I cannot tell somebody else how to live their life. With that being said, sorry, I'm very nervous of public speaking.
Oh, you know what? Go ahead. You're doing just fine. You're doing fine. No worries.
So when you say community health, I agree with that, but also I'm not trying to tell people and mandate people that they have to go to the gym for an hour a day, which is highly recommended, or anything like that. So with that being said, I just want to know, when are we just going to say no? What is it going to be, is it going to be when they say, oh, it's just the unvaccinated that have to get in the carts? It's just the unvaccinated that have to go to the camps? When is it just going to be no? That's all I want to know, and I just want you guys to think about that in your hearts, and I pray that you guys come to the right decision, whatever you feel is necessary. But yeah, but my prayer is that we uphold the Constitution and we do what is right for the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming, too, because I think the whole point is what we're doing here is respectful and decent and really telling me and the rest of us there is a difference of opinion out there. And if we can start talking about these issues with this kind of a tone on a regular basis, we're going to get a lot further with one another, and thank you for that. Because you were, you were really, you were just really kind, and that's important with how we work through all this. It's been a horrible few years. It really has. So thanks.
Great. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I, I want to say thank you as well for your comments, and I, I, I think really we're in extraordinary times. I don't think anyone sees any, gets any pleasure out of mandating anything. Of course, we are not. We, the county commission, don't make these mandates. They're made by the state. However, you know, we are in a state of emergency, and I think people's health, our economy, everything's at risk right now, and we're trying to get past this. So ideally, when we succeed in beating this, this virus, you know, we're out of this pandemic, we could all lift that. But no one wants to intrude on one's rights. No one takes any pleasure in this. You don't take any pleasure in wearing your shield. I take no pleasure in wearing this mask. It's difficult. It's painful. But thank you for your comments.
Great. Up next is Daniel Barker. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you.
You bet.
My name's Daniel Barker. I'm a resident of Clackamas County. So I prepared this last night. I'm just going to go ahead and read this.
Go ahead.
As men and women who work in the medical field, as first responders, teachers, in public service, we are expected to be people with high moral character and integrity. In law enforcement especially, everything that I do, not only in the line of duty, but also off-duty, depends on honesty, courage, and integrity. These things are expected of me every day, and if I violate that honesty and integrity, I would very quickly be out of a job and possibly facing legal ramifications. With the current mandate that has been put in place, I am being told that unless I receive an experimental vaccine, I will no longer be employed unless I submit to being treated differently than my fellow employees who chose to receive this vaccine, even though they have proven the vaccinated people can still contract and spread the virus. My conscience tells me not to get this vaccine. With this mandate, to keep my job, I will have to compromise the very thing that is required of me to do my job, my integrity. I swore an oath to uphold the United States Constitution and the Oregon State Constitution. And I wrote down a couple of sections of the Oregon State Constitution. Oregon State Constitution, Article One, Section Three, Freedom of Religious Opinion. No law shall in any case whatever control the free exercise and enjoyment of religious opinions or interfere with the rights of conscience. Section Twenty, Equality of Privileges and Immunities of Citizens. No law shall be passed granting to any citizen of class of citizens privileges or immunities which upon the same terms shall not equally belong to all citizens. This mandate, I feel, violates both of those sections of our Oregon State Constitution. There are very few things in this life that you can never get back once you lose, and your integrity is one of them. Please don't force people to compromise what they believe or what their conscience is telling them to do or not to do. Please tell the governor that Clackamas County, we stand for the people, their freedom to choose, and that we will uphold our constitution. Thank you.
I do, I do have a question for you, if I could.
Come back up, sir.
Yeah, I just have a question. So you, you are aware that there is a religious exemption you can file, and there's also a medical exemption you can file. Have you, have you entertained that?
I'm very aware of that, but I feel that by forcing people to do that, you are treating them in a different manner, because what if somebody in their conscience and in their, deep down, absolutely does not want to inject this into their body, but they do not fall under a religious or a medical exemption? Just everything, their own personal research, everything that they've seen, everything that they understand, they do not want this. They morally and with their integrity can't file a religious exemption because they're not a religious person. And they don't go to a doctor that says, you know, I'm a naturalist and I don't believe that you should get this. I'm not going to give you a medical exemption. What then? So you've served this county, or the hospital, or wherever you work for 20, 30 years, and now because you don't fall in one of two categories, you don't have a job anymore? You can't provide for your family? You can't support yourself? Your retirement's gone? So you're asking people to violate their own integrity and their own moral conscience in order to collect a paycheck?
Yeah, so I have one other question. And when you mean you, when you're saying, when you say you to us, you really mean the, the state government or the federal government?
Correct. The overreach of, of the state government.
Right. I want to make sure that's clear. So the second question I have is, the federal mandate apparently has a, an alternative, and that being a, a weekly testing. Is that something that you would support?
I personally would not support that because I feel that that's still intrusive. You're still being forced to insert something into your body every week, and I, I don't feel that that, I also feel that that, again, is not equal treatment, because if somebody who has chosen to receive this vaccination, who can still contract it and can still spread it, is not required to do weekly testing, then why is somebody who is unvaccinated required when they can just as easily contract it, just as easily spread it? And in my personal opinion, somebody who is vaccinated is going to be, is going to spread that more easily because if the research is true, then they can contract it and are more likely to be asymptomatic and not know that they have it and continue to spread it.
And one, thank you. And one, one last question. Do you support the mask requirement?
Um.
As an alternative?
As an alternative?
As, as an alternative to a vaccine mandate?
Um, again, if everybody is treated the same, because like I stated, the research shows that vaccinated versus unvaccinated, there's no difference in the, in the fact that they can still contract it and they can still spread it, but by these mandates, you are asking us to treat our citizens unequally.
Yep, understood. Thank you for your service, by the way. Thank you for taking the oath that you, the unique oath that you took that a lot of other citizens that are not in your line of work did not take. I appreciate that. And I think what we're all trying to do is avoid, you know, a lockdown, you know, some alternative to a lockdown, because if without the vaccine, remember a year ago, we didn't have a vaccine?
No.
And we were forced into a lockdown. And I, the one thing I do believe in, I do believe in the hospital capacity as a metric that we need to be cognizant of and make sure that people who actually do have emergencies get the healthcare, and right now that's in jeopardy. So again, I just want to just point that out. We're, I think we're, I'm looking for solutions that, that people can have, that we can beat this virus. So thank, again, thank you for your service and thank you for your comments today.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming forward. Gary, regarding certain county employees, what have you said about that?
Yes, so as an employer, Clackamas County is mandating nothing. It's the State of Oregon that has set the mandate that we, as an employer within the State of Oregon, must comply by, by Oregon Executive Order, Executive Order of the Governor. So in the case of vaccinations right now, by state order, it is only employees that work in a healthcare setting or work in a healthcare setting or in schools. And that does impact around 700 county employees out of 2,500. And the employee has, does have a choice. They can be vaccinated or file a religious exemption or a medical exemption. The medical exemption does require a letter or note from the doctor authorizing the exception, but the religious does not. That is entirely up to the employee and what they believe. We're not checking that, there's no, no check on that. We're not going to talk to your pastor or your priest. You just declare a religious exemption and then we accept that if the employee chose to do that. I have said to all employees, I'll say it again, we will make every possible accommodation that if an employee does refuse to be vaccinated and does not file an exemption, we will make every accommodation to try and reassign that employee to another role at Clackamas County. But again, it may mean they will not do the work they were hired to do. They still have to meet the requirements of the open position. There's a lot of variables there. But I've said, and I'll say it here, we will make every effort to accommodate that employee. But really, I'm asking them, please, if either be vaccinated or file one of the two exemptions.
I have a question for both Stephen Magcor and Gary Schmidt. Stephen Magcor is our legal counsel and Gary's our administrator. There's been a lot of talk about these two exemptions. Is there any other exemption that they could take? And they have an exemption based on my conscience. I do not believe in the vaccine. How different is that than the religious exemption? I understand what this gentleman was saying. Why do I have to declare some religion when I don't have the religion? That's as false as being mandated to be vaxxed. So I don't necessarily expect an answer today if you don't have one. But I think on next Tuesday, when we bring up the issue of the resolution, I would like to have an answer for that. Unless, Stephen, you know right off the top of your head.
Certainly, Chair. As Commissioner Savas and Gary pointed out, this is a state rule. We had nothing to do with its drafting. We do have to enforce it. It says you cannot work, volunteer, be an intern for the county which provides healthcare services in a healthcare setting unless you are vaccinated or have filed documented exceptions, either the medical exception or the religious exception, by October 18th. It says the county can't employ these people. That's what this order says. Commissioner Savas said the state, the federal mandate's likely going to come down, it's going to be broader, maybe with some outlet for weekly negative testing and things along those lines. But currently, as it stands, there are the two exceptions, medical and religious, not a conscientious objector, not a political opinion, or anything else along those lines. They certainly could try to include it under religious and see where that goes, but those are the two exceptions currently provided by state law.
Well, why can't we at the county have our own exemption, a, a subcategory of the religious exemption that says, "Based on my conscience"? I see nothing wrong with that. I mean, I would like to test it. If there's people out there willing to stand up and take that particular one, I don't know why we can't offer that available, and I would present it myself to the governor. The governor and I have talked very.[807.00][807.00](APPLAUSE). That is what is issue here. I do not want to see our county employees walk off the job. They are too vital to the functioning of Clackamas County. I've always said that. I've always said vaccines are a choice. They should remain a personal choice. That's why I'm against any mandate for vaccines. So Stephen, I'm going to ask you, by next Tuesday, please write for me, or I can do it this weekend, a subcategory of an exemption that our employees can take as a conscientious objector. The Vietnam War allowed it.
I can get you something by Tuesday.
Thank you kindly for that.[851.00][851.00](APPLAUSE). Okay, that's all the cards I have for in-person testimony. Shannon, online, do we have anybody wanting to testify?
Yes, I have four people registered to testify today.
Go ahead, please.
Connie Lee, you are up first. Please unmute. State your name and residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Connie Lee, and I live in Lake Oswego. According to a September 10th Washington Post article, people who were not fully vaccinated this spring and summer were more than 10 times more likely to be hospitalized and 11 times more likely to die of COVID-19 than those who were fully vaccinated, according to one of three major studies published Friday by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Here in Oregon, the American College of Emergency Physicians said that, quote, "The surge of patients in the emergency department has been escalating since April, and Oregon is now at a crisis point." OHA's most recent report on COVID-19 breakthrough cases for the last two weeks found that over 85% of infections are occurring in people who are unvaccinated. The tragedy is that most of these are preventable with vaccination," unquote. Many organizations, including hospitals, will be protecting their employees, customers, and patients by requiring the employees to be vaccinated to keep their jobs. This is a very reasonable requirement in order to keep more people safe, though I do support weekly testing. A couple of weeks ago, we had nine deaths from COVID here in Clackamas County. We can safely guess that all of those deaths were people who were not vaccinated. My own primary care physician told me all of his COVID patients that are in the hospital are unvaccinated. From my point of view, all of our efforts should be towards getting more people vaccinated and opening up more businesses with some sort of vaccine passport scheme. But Chair Smith seems very intent on passing an anti-vaccine mandate resolution. To me, this resolution sounds like more appeasement for the anti-vaxers and anti-maskers and very unsafe. Let's listen to the scientists and the public health officials instead. And let's get an expert from Clackamas Public Health in every BCC meeting to correct misinformation from anti-vaccine and anti-mask proponents. Thank you for listening.
Connie, I hope you're listening. Again, you've over-exaggerated the power I have as chair, which I suppose if I was a person to let such things go to my head, I do not have the authority to pass resolutions on my own opinion. The resolution that this board will be considering next Tuesday, each commissioner will have their own input on it. And as a body, as a governing body, we will compose something and we will take an up-and-down vote on it. The commissioners, as we speak, are providing language for that. So no, I am not necessarily an anti-vaxer, as you miss, have you incorrectly painted me. However, I do support liberty and I support freedom of choice, and I believe those rights have been trampled in this entire debate for over a year and a half. Thank you. Up next.
Chris Waller is up next. Chris, please unmute yourself. State your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. In the last two weeks, Chair Smith has published no fewer than 10 posts on Tudy Smith for Oregon complaining about vaccine and mask requirements. In these posts, she has repeated falsehoods, and as she has done for many months now, provided even more fuel to the tiny portion of our county that somehow believes that sensible public health measures are tyranny. As just one example, Chair Smith stated that 40% of medical professionals refuse to get vaccinated. The reality, according to the most recent studies from Northwestern University and Becker's Hospital Review, is that only 15% of healthcare staff are vaccine resistant, and this resistance is closely correlated with lower educational attainment. 96% of physicians are vaccinated. So are 88% of nurses. And the majority of nurses support vaccine mandates for healthcare workers. When this was pointed out, Chair Smith edited her statement to 25 to 40%, but it is still wrong. Chair Smith and Commissioner Scholl seem to think that most people oppose vaccine mandates. They are wrong here, too. A recent study by the Oregon Values and Beliefs Center showed that 78% of residents of Clackamas, Washington, and Multnomah Counties support vaccine mandates for healthcare workers. Let's look at reality. We know that COVID is deadly to many groups of people, such as the elderly and immunocompromised, and that these people are the most likely to suffer vaccine breakthroughs. We also know that according to studies published in antimicrobial resistance and infection control, that the cause of 60 to 95% of COVID outbreaks in healthcare facilities is healthcare workers who bring the virus in. Getting vaccinated is part of the job of being a healthcare worker. Most nursing and medical schools require their students to get a range of vaccinations. Many states already have requirements that healthcare workers be vaccinated against diseases that are easily transmissible in community settings such as hepatitis B. Most states require that many workers are tested for tuberculosis, which requires an injection. The American Medical Association and the American Nurses Association both support vaccine mandates for healthcare workers. So what would you do, Chair Smith? What is your solution? How would you stop healthcare workers from killing the people they are supposed to protect? Why aren't you focusing on discovering and remediating the causes of vaccine resistance rather than applauding and supporting vaccine refusers and wasting the county's time on useless and divisive declarations? Do you really want to support our healthcare workers? Well then, follow the lead of the numerous studies that have reported on the depression, anxiety, and stress that healthcare workers are suffering due to their overwhelming burden of caring for the unvaccinated COVID patients filling their ICUs. Their number one request? Tell people to get vaccinated. Thank you.
Up next. Up next is Michael Weber. Michael, please, oh, wait. Michael, please unmute yourself. State your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Michael Weber, Jennings Lodge. Chair Smith, I would like to address several statements that you made during the August 12 business meeting as you railed against sensible public health measures. As many of these tie into your current push to pass useless anti-vaccine mandate declarations, they are still relevant. You said Governor Brown lied to county officials when she returned the health authority to us on June 30th. Governor Brown turned over COVID management to the counties with the exception, with the expectation that the counties would act responsibly and take appropriate measures if cases started to rise. Cases didn't just rise, they skyrocketed. And yet you continued to scream "hell no" to a mask mandate, even as Multnomah instituted one and Washington County was about to. As the editorial board of the Oregonian wrote on August 15th, "County commissioners have credibility with their constituents as well as responsibility to protect them. Oregonians across the state need local leaders to step up their efforts to share vetted, accurate information and encourage measures that help control the spread. Instead, some are using the latest mandate to whip up anti-Brown sentiment." You said Governor Brown has panicked, realizing that her management of the situation has failed. No, Chair Smith, her management hadn't failed, yours had. She turned management of COVID over to you and the other counties, remember? You said Oregon has received hundreds of millions of dollars for the management of COVID. Governor Brown cries about hospital capacity. So increase the hospital capacity with the money given to our state by the federal government, or for incentives to doctors and nurses to enter the health profession and stay in it. Don't quit. Chair Smith, the governor cannot snap her fingers and build hospitals and staff them overnight. Local hospitals are already signing, are offering signing bonuses of $6,000 to $8,000 to nurses who have to step into hospitals that are short-staffed and filled with critically ill, unvaccinated patients. They have to be screamed at by families insisting COVID is a hoax and the horse dewarmer will cure it. They have to watch people die preventable deaths, and increasingly, those people are young adults and kids. In one recent week of data from OHA, over 1,200 children under 19 were infected, and the largest group of patients were 20- to 29-year-olds. After a year and a half, they are exhausted, frustrated, and stressed beyond belief. You want to fix this? State loudly and clearly, get vaccinated and wear a mask. Stop wasting our precious time on useless declarations and instead focus on proven science that will lead us out of this pandemic. Thank you.
Up next. Up next is Bill Weir. Bill, please unmute yourself. State your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Bill Weir, Damascus. I want to revisit my public testimonies of August 19th and September 9th. On August 19th, I brought up the subject of public meeting rules regarding the handling of the censor of Commissioner Scholl. I said perhaps the county attorney could shed some light on why there was no written public notice and how it didn't even appear on the agenda of January 14th. How was there a completed censor motion ready to go for commission to vote out of thin air? Chair Smith declared this to be a serious charge and deferred to the county attorney. Mr. Magcor assured us that proper procedure was followed. He'd offered no supporting evidence. He said if I wanted recourse, I could go to court. So my, my question wasn't answered. On September 9th, my testimony focused on why the process around an executive meeting wasn't pursued by commission before bringing forth in a formal vote. My question specifically was why was the protocol of an executive session not given Mr. Scholl? After my testimony, Chair Smith condescendingly said, "Isn't that interesting?" The chair then, the chair said emphatically, "Commissioner Scholl knew what was going on." Yet that has never been articulated by Commissioner Scholl. How do we know? She turned to Commissioner Scholl and asked him if he was a voting member of the commission. He said yes. Then the chair turned it over to the county attorney. He again referred me to the courts for satisfaction. Again, no answer to my question. What happened on January 14th is not going to go away until the citizens know what and how. We almost had, in my opinion, a political coup on commission. This censor is an ongoing statement of the commission's position. As of this very minute, if Commissioner Scholl resigned, all of the rest of you would feel vindicated. I would suggest that you have a commission vote on whether after eight months on commission by Mr. Scholl, he is deemed competent and trustworthy. You should allow for public comment so all sides could weigh in. Thank you.
Is that it? Shannon?
That is the end of my list. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is the county administrators' update.
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. I always like to share the good work that our county employees do, and I will do that again today. Our transportation and development staff were recognized by Paul, who lives in Oak Grove, who expressed appreciation to our transportation maintenance team. Paul wrote, "A crew came out to trim blackberry bushes on Thesen Road, and this is a big improvement for safer passage. So many thanks to you and the crew for following up." So thank you to our team in transportation and development for responding. Next, one of our construction contractors had great things to say about our transportation and development engineering team. The contractor wrote, "I've got to tell you all how much I appreciate working with a department like yours, who truly has their stuff together. I know you are all busier than the rest, but you really are the best. You are super responsive. Your communication is great with our team and our consultants. You have clear roles between personnel who know what they are doing. And you all are a pleasure to work with and just very nice people. This profession is getting more challenging by the day, but you all make the process very painless for us from start to finish. Just wanted to say how much I appreciate you." So thank you for this note, and it is referring to three of our employees in transportation and development, Patrick Doherty, Deanna Mulder, and Jody Lagerway. So thank you, Patrick, Deanna, and Jody, for demonstrating outstanding customer service. Those are my two examples for today, many more, which I'll share in future weeks. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Well, thank you, Gary. I appreciate that. I always like hearing about the wonderful work our employees are doing. Now is the time for Commissioner Communication. Up first is Commissioner Savas.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to, we can, back to you, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay. I just, the order on the thing was different, so I was just.
Well, mine says Commissioner Savas.
That's okay. I can go first, yeah. So, thank you. Just recollect myself. What I really wanted to talk about today was where we were 20 years ago. And I, probably because of my childhood and the environment I grew up in, I was very young during the Vietnam War and very close to a lot of military activity at the time. I have a, perhaps a different perspective than, than some, or a more personal perspective, maybe is a better thing to say. But I was grateful for the opportunity and to participate in our honor circle as a, as a participant, or to recognize all who gave or paid the ultimate sacrifice on September 11th, 2001. And over the weekend, to watch some of the stories of some of the heroism of those who went into the building at the time, knowing that they may not really make it out, who put. put everything aside. And, and just as, as we do in times of war or times of emergency, a lot of our public servants in many ways, even those on the front lines, even a year ago, we were talking about the front lines, people that are working whether in law enforcement or working in the stores or working in the hospitals, were at risk of contracting COVID. And there was a real sense of, of fear. People didn't want to go to the stores. People didn't want to go to work. And that fear has translated into really frankly, an economic crisis that we have not even seen, really frankly, the real impacts of that economic crisis. But coming back to, to that sense of patriotism and that working, doing, reacting in the good of all, for the greater good, there are times we have to set aside, you know, our personal feelings, our personal freedoms for the greater good. And I really applaud our, our, those who, especially those in the military that really, again, sacrificed so much. And I was, I asked Mr. Sho, a friend of mine who had went to Afghanistan, excuse me, Iraq, I asked Mr. Sho, because he had, this friend of mine had shared something with me, and I asked Mr. Sho if he had, he too was familiar with that. And that person told me, my gosh, when I, when I, when I went, when I was ready to go overseas, I got all these shots, inoculations and everything. I didn't even know what it was. They wouldn't even tell me what it all was. I had no idea. And, and some people, you know, had reactions to it, but that they, they, you know, they pulled out of it. But I just thought, you know, I just thought that, you know, the bravery and the fact of, you know, those folks really not questioning, you know, the, that, that call to duty to go to action, to defend our country. And those who today here and are inside the states who go to protect everyone in, in public service, all of us, the oath they took, the oath we take, I really value that. So it was sobering, on one hand, to think about September 11th, but I also want to remind you, where we, where were we twenty years ago today? Twenty years ago today, we were in a national lockdown. Planes were not allowed to fly. Transportation was limited. We were in a state of emergency because we didn't know what was going to happen next. And that went on for two weeks. Our freedoms, you know, if you want to call it that, were, were, were limited. But we did that in recognition of the national crisis and, and the threat to our country. And I think that we are today fighting a different enemy, and that enemy is COVID. And I, hopefully, we can pull together and some of us can put aside the sacrifices of some of our freedoms so we can beat this thing, so we don't frankly further damage our, our economy, because it's going to affect frankly, our kids and the next generations to come more than it's going to affect us. It's painful for us. It will affect us, but not anywhere as severe as it will affect our, our children to come. So that's my concern. That's my thoughts. That concludes my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Up next, Commissioner Sho.
Good morning, Clackamas County. Tomorrow is U.S. Constitution Day. Take some time to consider our U.S. Constitution and the foundation it provides for guiding this nation. It has established an environment in which its citizens of the country can pursue life, liberty, and happiness, unencumbered by excessive and oppressive governmental mandates and intrusions into their day-to-day lives. The goal of the government of this county, in addition to serving the needs of our citizens and businesses, must be to uphold the freedoms protected by our Constitution and our Bill of Rights. We must recognize and demand that governments in the United States of America at all levels are to be restrained and limited, and that the power of government resides in the people. Are we on course? Are there changes that need to be made to bring our nation back on course? Is Article 1, Section 8 enumerated powers that was written into our Constitution to limit the size and scope of the federal government being adhered to? Is the governor of Oregon adhering to the intent of separation of powers and limited government? If the answer to these questions is no, then we have a responsibility to act, to sound off, and to get involved and to fix it. The threat to fire a citizen for not taking a vaccination and terminating their job, thereby denying that person the ability to support their families and denying them their liberty to choose for themselves to be vaccinated or not, and essentially isolating them from society, does not ring of the U.S. Constitution. You and I have work to do in Oregon. Tomorrow is also U.S. Citizenship Day. Hit these masks. This nation became strong in part because America offered opportunity to all people who wanted freedom and a chance for a better life. All people of all races, of all ethnic backgrounds, and from every nation on earth. I would like to thank all the people in Clackamas County who are new citizens and worked through the long process to earn U.S. Citizenship. I, I am proud to call each of you my fellow American. On the town hall, Clackamas County Commissioners will host a special town hall on suicide prevention, awareness, and mental health resources this coming Wednesday from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. Prior to the session, attendees or interested parties will have the opportunity to email their comments and questions to clacko news@clackamas.us. Please join us on this very important town hall. On public safety, on one September, Clackamas County upgraded how it communicates with residents during times of disaster by replacing its emergency notification software. All residents are urged to enroll or re-enroll at www.clackamas.us-publicalerts. And that will get you locked on to be updated on evacuations, shelter-in-place notifications, shelter locations, and other extremely important information. This will help us all be prepared for the next fire or earthquake or whatever it might be. On the Park Avenue project along McLaughlin Avenue, have you made your opinion known on this dynamic urban project? If not, see clackamas.us/planing/parkavenue and see the complete history and overview of this project. Your input is important. And finally, on public health, do you know somebody who needs medical or dental attention but does not have insurance through employment or otherwise cannot afford insurance? Tell them to start on the road to help by looking at clackamas.us/healthcenters and get the help you need. There's no need for anyone in this county to go without basic healthcare. And finally, thank you all for your work in making Clackamas County one of the best counties in the nation. God bless you all and stay free. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sho. Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Okay. Well, I want to thank Commissioner Savas for mentioning the 9/11 event that we were there. And Commissioner Sho, you were there as well, were you not? I, I think yes, you were there. And it was here on our Circle of Honor. And I mentioned a man who I think very highly of, Chip Salmons, who was a Vietnam veteran. I, uh, he's on Facebook and he's traveling around the, the country with his wife, going to places in the United States that they really want to see and have fun with. And I mentioned, well, Chip, I mentioned you during my talk during the event because it was you that really pulled together this Circle of Honor that we now have outside honoring our veterans. And it has become a spot that has been used continuously for honoring folks and events through the years. So, thanks, Chip. I hope you tuned into the meeting and hear that I mentioned you one more time. You also worked with the poet Francis Ritchie. Francis Ritchie is a poet, became friends with Chip, and she did a project here in this county. And what it was, was she interviewed National Guard soldiers who had come home from combat. And she, she heard some pretty heartbreaking things. And it turned into a book of poems, and I'm trying to find with my piles of books, called Voices of the Guard. So what she did was take their stories, their narratives, what they experienced, and she actually wrote vignettes. And one of them particularly was moving to me, and I'm, I will try and find it and bring it back to all of us, where a young soldier remembers being blasted into the air and all he could see was light, 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 and then suddenly as if something had held him up and gently dropped him to the ground. So there are these very deep, meaningful thoughts of these guys in this lovely book. And I'm going to try and find it again, so perhaps we can all take a look at it. And we may even want to read some at some of our meetings. But I will caution you that it will make you cry. It really will. It will make you cry. I'm good friends with General Curtis Loop. We read one, he read one in a ceremony once with me, and I never thought I'd see a general weep, but that day I did. That was truly amazing. The other thing I want to talk about is the Association of Oregon Counties. And our legislative committee got pretty controversial the other day because, because once again, we, all the counties across the state got together. And there was a resolution presented as well, dealing with, you know, mask mandates and things of that sort. It became very controversial. And it became very clear to me that it was a wedge issue separating, separating all the counties across the United States. I mean, across, actually, not, probably across the United States, but actually particularly here with our own counties. Very emotional discussion. We have a commissioner who is a physician that was very emotional. We have had another commissioner from, not Marion, but I think Yam Hill, who felt, again, that this was going to hurt our workers, our workforce, that was going to put counties in dire straits because people will lose their jobs or leave their jobs. So it was a pretty controversial discussion. And the vote was twenty to nineteen not to accept the, the, the document that said, you know, that is very similar to some of the things we've been looking at here. So what that told me was how split we are, not just here in Clackamas County. We're seventy percent of our people, our folks are getting, our people, our residents, the people we serve are getting vaccinated. But then there are folks who have, for the personal reasons or whatever, have trepidation over this. So it made me think. And so what I did was look up some history of the 1918 flu pandemic. And that was another dire, dire time in our medical history, in the middle of the first of the Great War as well. And what you see there is photographs of young men who are getting infected and who are dying in tents and not, not just in fields of battle, but in fields of hospital tents from the, you know, from the Spanish, they called it the Spanish Flu at the time, but they actually think it originated in Kansas, of all things.
In where?
In Kansas, from pigs. So the point, the point of what I'm trying to make here is, back then as well, we started to see the American Public Health Association come to the fore. And people were facing the same issues we're facing today, whether to ban, you know, banning parades, banning large gatherings, wearing masks, but getting mandates at this point, or mandates or directives, maybe that's a better word, I don't know, from the American Public Health Association that were implemented. And one of the historical interpretations was people, this is, this is the real point of train. People were willing to, to adhere to those restrictions largely because of the national sentiment of the Great War and the soldiers that were there, that they were willing to temporarily give up what we might perceive as personal liberties for a period of time in order to implement these public health. So I guess that's the point I'm trying to get across, folks, is that, and thank you for graciously listening to me, that there are two sides to this, okay? And we've experienced this before as Oregonians and as Americans. This is not the first time this country has faced a pandemic. What I am worried about is this idea of nationalism has gotten split of our national unity. It's, we're not unified anymore. And if I was to tell you that that is not the most thing that I worry about the most, it's this divide and split I'm seeing in this country. And back then, it didn't happen that way because they all felt it was their duty because of what they had been going through with the First World War. So, and that's history from Stanford University. So I'm not trying to be controversial. I'm just trying to share perspectives. And remember that with liberty comes responsibility. So thank you for listening to me and understanding that, that I'm trying to get folks to think a little bigger about this and understand each other's points of view.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Your words are appreciated. I have three things I'm going to talk about. Of course, we all experienced nine eleven last Saturday, and I want to thank all my Commissioners for attending those events and speaking. I attended three events, and it was really good to be around people and listen to their gratitude and respect to our first responders on that. We had a really exciting approval this week. Portland General Electric, our region's largest electric provider, has asked Clackamas County to join in a partnership to apply for a FEMA grant, is, because governments have to apply for a FEMA grant, companies cannot, to harden the electrical system across Clackamas County. And that would include burying electric lines underground and upgrading four of our substations. We have substations up at the Bull of the Run watershed area that provides water to three counties, mainly Multnomah County and City of Portland, although it's located in Clackamas County. And that's very important that that water supply continues. Also, it will harden the system going up Highway 26 up to Weemee, up to the mountain, and remodel three additional substations in addition to that. So we're going to be working with PGE on that, and I'm very excited to be their partnership, in a partnership with them on that. Going back to some of the testimony that you heard today, I need to really correct the record. A lot of these people call up, they love to slam me. I'm chair. I understand, I accept the responsibility of, since I'm the chair, a lot of people think I have a lot of power that I don't. But I will listen to that. I just want to say, like my colleague Martha, you know, I fear reason and respect has been lost in this debate. I also am concerned that the middle ground is fast disappearing. And throughout this entire debate, I have always sought a middle ground. And this is how I've done it. Just because I support choice and liberty does not equate choice and liberty does not equate to being anti-vax because I am not anti-vax. And my colleagues know this. My colleagues sitting at this dais and the absent one know this, and they have said so publicly. My efforts to ensure the vaccination throughout Clackamas County has been steadfast, but I support choice. In fact, it was my idea to set up mobile vans and get out into our rural areas and deliver the vaccination to those people who could not go to the convention center or North Portland in the early stages of this. And today, we have a telephone number that anybody in Clackamas County can call up, and that vax will be delivered to them. This is a very difficult situation we find ourselves in, and I will repeat myself. I fear the middle ground is fast disappearing, and I will fight to maintain that. Thank you, Commissioners and staff, and this meeting is adjourned.